Twenty-second regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. We need them conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. A commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, blockberries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or returned to us. Mr. Savin, give the role, please.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Ms. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shapke?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Second item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Uh...
We approve the agenda.
Yeah, moved by Mr. Gottlieb and seconded by Mr. Tagle.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shapke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
The dead item number three is the approval of amendments of the June twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen Planning Commission special study meeting. Is there a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Uh, moved by Mr. Krent, seconded by Mr. Stratt.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shapke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
And next is the public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no one in the audience, we'll move on to the next one, the zoning board of appeals, ZPA report. Mr. Krent?
Yeah, there were two items this last week requesting a variance. One was for the North Hills Christian Reform Church. It amounted to a, um, they wanted to construct a shed and move a dumpster. Bottom line on the whole conversation was that the dumpster was already encroached, put it this way, the dumpster did not encroach on the setback requirement when it was originally put there, but new ordinance required a fifty-foot setback. So, by moving, making these rearrangements, they really didn't encroach that much more than a couple feet of the existing situation, and they added some greenery to screen it. And the neighbor right behind it, that would be the most affected, wrote a letter saying they wouldn't mind moving those, the shed and the dumpster. So, that was approved. The second item was for a house addition, and what it came down to is the lot was basically a trapezoid, irregular trapezoid. And it was the only lot in the surrounding neighborhood that was shaped that way and prevented any other lot around there. There would have not needed a variance for the house addition. So, um, we looked at it and really didn't, and all the neighbors around said it wouldn't affect them. So, again, that variance was approved, and that's, that's it.
Thank you. Item six is the planning and zoning report. Mr. Savin?
Got a couple items in the, in the hopper that are gonna be upcoming. One is, um, an addition to the Kresgei headquarters building on Big Beaver. Uh, south side of Big Beaver, just west of Coolidge. Um, it's actually pretty close, but there's a couple of issues. The, the site plan itself was kinda hard, difficult to read, and was lacking some information either. I'm pretty confident they complied, but it would, we would've, it wasn't presentable, so they have to make some tweaks. We're just waiting for that. The other, we've talked about, we saw, reviewed a conceptual drawing for revisions to the PUD, Big Beaver PUD, um, on the north side of Big Beaver, just east of John R. Uh, if you recall, it's the residential on the front and, and, excuse me, retail on the front and residential to the north. And they've gotta still kind of iron some kinks out before they present it to us. We're meeting with them Thursday to discuss it, and that should be coming before the Planning Commission in the near future. On a non-development topic, we're seeing a trend in applications for people who wanna raise chickens.
[laughing]
Yeah, we have a requirement, um, if you wanna raise one or more chickens in Troy, you have to have at least three-quarters of an acre. You can't have a rooster. And we're, roosters are bad.
[laughing]
Not for the chickens.
Not for the chickens. [laughing] Yeah, they're, so, um, we're getting more applications that go before the Animal Control Board of Appeals. We're getting more people calling, coming to the counter, and some people, I think it's a trend now, they want farm-fresh eggs. And, uh, in order, I, I've heard in order, if, if you wanna have a dozen, dozen eggs a day, you've gotta have like twice as many chickens as you want eggs. That's a really pump. So, you, you were talking, if you wanna, if you wanna have, if you eat a lot of eggs, you gotta have a lot of chickens.
Right.
Um, now, they've gotta be, they've gotta be appropriately housed, and they can't be, they can't, they can't be traipsing all over the neighborhood, and then, so, we, when they do go before the board of appeals, we require that they have kind of a plan to show how they're gonna maintain these chickens, but just, there's, where there's more and more of these applications, there's one before the, um, before the appeals board tomorrow night, they want, they're on six-tenths of an acre, they want ten chickens. Uh, just, let me find, find that humor, so, that's interesting.
Well, don't you want your chickens free range?
Well, I, I guess, uh, a lot of people do, and, and probably, if they do, Troy probably isn't the right, good place to be living if you want free range chickens. There's other places that would afford you that opportunity, you know?
Well, and not to make life a situation, but there was a recent rooster attack, where actually a...
That's right.
Troy policeman got attacked by a rooster as well, so...
It was a woman. A woman got attacked, and then the, the police officer was smart enough to read the situation and went in, went in the patrol car so he wouldn't get attacked by a very aggressive rooster. The property owner indicated that they make very little watchdogs. They're very territorial, and they will defend their territory, uh, with great vigor.
And get you up on time.
Absolutely.
Just some way to mute them.
Yeah, yeah.
Put a follow-up on that. Since I moved in thirty-five years ago, we've always had chickens in our neighborhood, so, the rooster's gone, thank God. It was five AM every morning.
Yeah.
But that's, that's gone.
Interesting.
Very good. Uh, the next item is the main topic for tonight, the master plan update, Rochester Road study area. Who's gonna start that off?
Ben's gonna kinda lead it, but we're gonna do like we did last time when we talked about the first, last month, the first, uh, draft, um, sub-area, which was North Troy. He'll kinda lead it off, but I'll, I will definitely jump in, and we'll, this'll be kinda like a discussion. If anyone wants to, wants to have questions or to dialogue during this, then we'll just talk.
Yeah, I have a pretty short presentation. Um, I've included a hard copy of the plan in front of everyone. Again, this is a draft, we're, sometimes I look at seventy-five of the way, percent of the way complete with this, and it'll depend on what the Planning Commission feels. Um, just before I get into it, I wanna update everyone on where we are in terms of the process. So, we are right now in this June, September, two thousand fourteen holding pattern. Um, we are, our plans present all four of the specialty plans in next consecutive months. After that, then we start in the fall, we start more of our public engagement process, where we're actually gonna meet with homeowners associations, meet with the high school, and then take these individual plans and meet with, uh, with focus groups in each of the different, uh, areas to, to, to show them off these plans. And then, with the ultimate goal of having adoption either in, in the beginning of two thousand fifteen in that timeframe. So, it just gives a little background as to, in terms of where we are in the process. Um, tonight we're gonna talk about Rochester Road. Uh, the area that we're focusing on is between Waddles and Big Beaver. This line will actually be moved down, it's actually incorporated all the way down to Big Beaver. Um, I'm sure most of us are familiar with this section of road, but I just took some pictures that I'd like just to walk us through this. Um, it's primarily an auto-oriented, commercial, strip-type development corridor. Uh, there is a limited, uh, few office buildings along the corridor, for the most part, it's this kinda strip commercial. Mostly, uh, one-story commercial. Um, there's some inconsistency with both building placement, facade quality, um, some visual clutter with the signage. You can see a lot of obsolete signs that aren't even permitted today, um, exist along the corridor. Um, this is the type of development pattern you're seeing. Again, both parking in front, parking in the rear, the buildings are tend to be sort of, towards the back ends of the sites. Um, you have some new, nice development coming in, uh, some, some nice landscaping, some burnout obviously in front to kinda somewhat shield the auto-oriented use. Um, you have some dated, commercial strip buildings that we're looking for some renovations and some, um, some improvements. This is, they've done a nice job here, at least with landscape along the front, to kinda soften the appearance of this building. Um, but then you have some that really are dated and do need some, some definite improvements.
Some curb appeal.
Curb appeal, that's what the Realtors say. Uh, and then you've got the bench nowhere, so, um, you've got some, just kinda some stuff out there that really doesn't fit in with anything, and you don't really know where it came from and what it's supposed to serve, but there's a lot of stuff like this, uh, throughout the corridor. It zoned, um, primarily CB and GB. Those are, um, commercial designations. One is the commercial business, and the other one is general business. Um, there're, there're varying degrees of commercial, uh, zoning, just, I think the GB is a little more intensive development than the CB, um, designation. Um, but the, the, the main designation is GB, which is really talking about kind of a regional shopping destination, so not necessarily neighborhood shopping, but more of a regional, 'cause this is, Rochester Road is a very, um, you know, is a very, is a major arterial run north, north-south through the suburbs. So, it, the draw is for more of a regional. I'm not sure that really meets the focus and vision of what we want here in Troy, especially along the strip where there is adjacent to residential. So, that's something that we'll be talking about here, about what the, really the zoning and the intent of what, what the zoning is along this corridor section. Again, uh, this is pretty typical. You have, you know, an obsolete sign with parking in front, little landscaping or screen in between, um, and kind of a dated facade that we're looking for some improvements of. Uh, this is a qual, an example of a nice quality sign, and it's new development is coming in. This is, Tim Hortons was, was recently, uh, completed. Um, the city's made, uh, an investment in the corridor. Uh, you, the new boulevard, the new expanded right-of-way, there's some new lighting, uh, they've put in some new landscaping, which will mature over time. So, we're seeing the city start to put some investment. We're not necessarily seeing private development community match that investment that the city is starting to put in. Um, and the biggest issue, this is, this is Rochester Road, one of the biggest issues that we have to address is this. Um, you've got basically one parcel off on both sides of Rochester Road, you're, you're above letting single-family residential. Um, and oftentimes, there's little barriers between, um, some, in some places, there's a, there's a pretty solid wall that goes along. Um, if the planning commissioner remembers the self-storage building that we recently reviewed, uh, I think it was about a year ago, maybe a little year and a half ago, um, there was a, an old dated wall there, um, there's some really shaggy landscaping that they're gonna improve, uh, yeah, uh, improve as part of the development. But really, the planning commissioner didn't have a good control over the site because the zoning allowed what these, the applicants wanted to do. So, we need to address the transition and buffer between, uh, the commercial development on Rochester Road and the residential, uh, development behind. I will note, um, that in some sections of Rochester Road, not necessarily this section, but in some sections, the parcel are, are not very deep. Um, most, most commercial developments now are about two-hundred feet deep at a minimum for, for, to, in order to, to really good development. Um, in some sections, we're looking at a hundred feet to a hundred and twenty feet in depth. So, you've got a contrast there. Um, do you wanna push the building behind that parking in front, which pushes the building back towards, towards the single-family residential? Or do you wanna try to push the building up front and not be consistent with the rest of the development pattern and put most of the, the parking in the back, which then still, um, affects the residential? Um, so that's something we need to think about too with zoning, is how we wanna deal with these inconsistencies of these parcels. Um, we did have, uh, we talked about Rochester Road at the, at the, um, the real estate forum, and there, there are a number of, of recommendations, but they really broke down into what, what we constitute as two categories. Uh, the first are these, these four really break down to, we need to protect the residential, um, investments adjacent to these properties and really enhance them when we can. Um, and the second one was, there needs to be some visual improvements. There was definitely a, a focus of Rochester Road was the fact that there's a lot of visual clutter, both with the buildings, some landscaping, and signage really, too. Um, so there's some visual, visual clutter, and we need to really clean up the corridor from an aesthetics point of view. Um, so, based on that, we came up with three priorities based on those finds. The first was, we need to enhance the image and identity through a private investment as well as public and private partnerships. We realize that, um, what really speaks is money, so we need to find ways to incentivize commercial development. It has to be through some public-private partnerships in, in a lot of instances. The second is improve access management. Um, and I'll talk about what we're talking about there. Uh, Rochester Road was part of a multi-jurisdictional, uh, road access management plan that was adopted in three or four years ago.
Yeah.
Um, we never really, it's not come into fruition, um, and so this is, we're, we're gonna, we're addressing that through the master plan, too, and how that should, how we should look at, uh, access management, that's, as part of that plan. And the last one, and probably the most important for this section of Rochester, is really preserving the adjacent residential character and encourage incompatible development as we move forward. So, the first one is enhancing the image, uh, and identity. We really have, um, four recommendations for that. First is to develop design guidelines. Um, there's different ways that we can tackle that. That's typically through a zoning measure. The planning commission neither can adopt guidelines, which they reference, um, these are not requirements, they're just more a guideline. Or the second one is to actually adopt design standards. Uh, I'll give you an example. On Big Beaver, our form-based district, we actually have design standards. You have to build fifty percent transparency in your front window, et cetera. That's a standard that has to, to be done. Um, there, there's, there's pros and cons to both guidelines and, and standards. Guidelines, they're not enforceable, but yet they are a little bit more favorable for the, to the development community. You're not requiring them to do a certain thing, or not, it's more of a guideline. Um, but also, we don't wanna, by adopting standards, we don't wanna also stifle development potential in this area, too. So, there's a balance between the two, and, and so, uh, right now, we recommend design guidelines, but we can look in the future into actually adopting standards as part of, of design origins in this area. Uh, the second is to establish a building improvement program. Uh, that can be a cost-sharing and facade rebate program. Uh, there are some state, um, improvement programs that we can be a part of. We haven't got the specifics about what those programs are, would be, but just the idea that we're looking to make some investment on the building facades, uh, for these, for these, uh, for some of these buildings, these dated buildings. Uh, the third is a, is a coordinated street scrape improvement. This kinda gives you an example of what we're thinking about. You have a pretty significant area between the edge of curb and the property lines here that can actually make some quality investments in this area, and, and something as limited as putting up a, a common fence, a fence design that's common throughout the corridor, uh, or even benches and some pedestrians to go like, really goes a long way to improving the corridor. Has anyone, has anyone been on Sashabaw Road recently? Um, Sashabaw Road actually, Independence Township actually adopted a, uh, consistent, uh, fence design that they have implied along the whole corridor. And as redevelopment occurs, they require all the development to, to put in basically this common fence, and they're actually starting to make a consistent look and look, look a lot nicer on Sashabaw. So, that's one of the ideas here, too, is if we adopt a coordinated street, uh, scrape improvement, that as development occurs, it'll take time, um, they can implement this, this street scape, so over time, we'll eventually get that into place. Um, and the third one, the fourth one was encourage innovative stormwater management. Uh, this came about from the last master plan, it's kind of a carryover of that. Um, we don't necessarily see that ever coming to the fruition of which it was adopted in, in the current plan, but we think there are opportunities within sites as well as within some of the public driveway areas to actually incorporate some of these things. And we talk about this every time a development comes in, about trying to incorporate it, and so, we're just putting the, putting the feelers out there again.
Just to make sure it looks on the same page, the, the existing master plan kind of earmarked Rochester Road as the green corridor, and it was really, um, it was a way of defining branding, uh, um, kind of tying all the development along Rochester Road together. One of the common threads would be sustainable, green-type infrastructure. And it, it really, I don't think it really took, you know, it just didn't, it, it hasn't really seemed to be successful, um, but we certainly wanna continue to encourage it. I think it's important, and we, and, and we, we definitely wanna, wanna move forward with that, but maybe not as heavy-handed as it was in the master plan, if that makes any sense.
One of the things, Sashabaw Road was the lighting.
That, too.
Very, very effective.
Yeah.
I'm surprised, Tom, you didn't comment on the Cobra Head, the Cobra Head lighting.
I was going to.
Yeah.
The highway lighting.
It, it jumps out, it really does. It's, it's designed for I-75.
Yep.
We're talking about this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, those are new. You know, those aren't legacies from bygone eras, but, um, but that just speaks to the more importance about getting this in some of the redevelopment sites. Um, you're gonna see this graphic in a couple spots in the plan, and this really is graphic to kinda summarize the big picture of what we're looking for along the corridor. Um, the first thing is cross-access. This kinda goes in part with the redevelopment of each site, but also talks about access management. We wanna encourage and require, when we can, cross-access between sites.
And we've been doing that for the last forty years.
Yep. Um, second issue is the buffering between land uses. I'll get more into detail about that, but the concept here is provide additional buffer both in greenscape as well as additional setbacks for buildings along, along the corridor. Um, third is pedestrian connections. We're not only talking about pedestrian connections along Rochester, we're also talking about pedestrian connections internal sites, and that doesn't really occur. It's, it's very unsafe to connect in between sites here, so we're also talking about pedestrian connections within sites. Uh, building form, uh, high-quality building, uh, building material, some transparency along the front. Uh, we did this as a two-story building, this could be a one-story building and still have a nice, present a nice presence to Rochester Road. Um, stormwater management, again, in some, some of the areas, uh, some of the green space, incorporate some stormwater management prac, best practices in those areas. Um, these, these are mislabeled, but parking lot landscaping, um, put some parking lot landscaping to buffer the buildings with the residential behind, and also put some parking lot landscaping in front to kinda soften the facade along Rochester. And lastly, uh, streetscape improvements, which you, which you see, uh, in this graphic.
Excellent graphic, by the way.
Yes.
Very, very effective.
Is there any questions about this, um, first, enhancing the image, uh, strategy?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
We have a problem with shovel lots, there's not a lot of depth on some of these. Uh, the greenscapes and the white sidewalks on the front are going to, uh, either force the businesses to go back, and then they'll have more limited parking if they go back because you only can have so much, uh, parking in front according to the width of the building. So, uh, I think that's gonna be a real challenge, uh, to, uh, mesh those things together and still come out with a, a beautiful, uh, outcome like, uh, you presented to us tonight.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a struggle.
It's a struggle.
It's a struggle. Um, and we'll, we'll talk about this in, in a bit, but right now, most, as most of the buildings on Rochester Road are set up, is a lot of the buildings actually back here, and they have, most of their parking in front. And so, we recognize this is not, this is not gonna be Big Beaver, we're not gonna get the building right to the street, so we should allow for some parking in front. Um, but maybe a row or two of parking is fine, and put most of the parking in back because the impact of a parking lot is typically less on a residence than the impact of having a building right, right there. So, let's push the buildings up closer, allow a little bit of parking in front, um, but then increase the amount of landscape buffering they have to put in the rear. And this, this actually is two, a two-scale development. This is actually a parcel on Rochester Road. This is the required parking that would be needed based on the building of this size. So, this could fit within a site conceptually.
What about height restrictions, uh, along that corridor? Height restrictions are, can really be a, a nemesis to, uh, beautiful development if you've got, we don't wanna end up like another Southfield, you know, where you, you go along and whoop, you know?
Yeah. And that's, that's, Agent, that's the question that the planning commissioner really struggled with, with the self-storage.
Right.
Because that zoning district allowed five stories by right.
Did that read five stories?
Five stories by right, and that's a tall building.
It is a big one.
You know, adjacent to these one, and, you know, these two-story residential behind there. Um, so what's one of the things we're gonna talk about in the third strategy is addressing zoning requirements along the corridor to, to address height setbacks, landscaping, et cetera.
Another thing you were talking about, how some of the signs on some of the existing buildings are, under today's standards, would be illegal. So, uh, there might have, come up with some kind of a, a sign program so that we can have some unity when you do this, uh, beautification program, so that we have some consistency on how those signs, they still draw people into the businesses, but are able to, uh, not be an eyesore.
Yep.
And so, some of the signs that you was referring to have been made non-conforming because of their, the proximity to the right-of-way.
Right.
If acquisition of the right-of-way widening of the road, the signs are now are too close. They were allowed to stay because they, they had invested in the sign, and we didn't want to be too, too disruptive with the project.
Mr. Tagle?
Yeah, Ben, you had said something about there's state funding for facade improvements. Would that include signage?
No, it, it's, it's a building.
Follow-up on that. Years ago, in the seventies, there was the block, block grant, uh, projects. Do we have anything like that today?
We're not, it's...
We, we participated in, in, in block grant. I, I...
Sidewalks.
I know enough to be, I know enough to be dangerous, maybe not even enough to be dangerous. I can look into that and come back, and I, I know we are a participant, and, and we tip, typically, the, the money goes towards, uh, neighborhoods that have low-income, you know, or...
Yeah, I was involved in a project in the mid-nineteen-seventies in, in Dearborn. Can the government, either a joint thing with the city and the federal government, provide a ninety percent of renovation costs for the buildings? I would've just had to put in ten percent, and so I, we did three blocks totally, redid the funds of the buildings.
Hmm.
So, that was under...
Yeah.
That old law, I don't know if that exists anymore.
Hey, Brent, you were, you were in Kalamazoo at the conference there, remember? And they allocated, or the government, I mean, the city allocated, uh, I forgot what it was, uh, a hundred thousand for the storefront, and another hundred thousand to developer for the interior. I think that's what the figures were. Do you remember that?
I don't recall the specifics of that, but, uh, I know that Kalamazoo and also Grand Rapids had some programs that were really innovative in terms of, uh, retrofitting buildings and improving...
But we went through the Kalamazoo, and, uh, I know that, we, we went on a tour, and we went upstairs.
Yep.
Remember that?
Yes.
That one development, that was...
Yep.
I mean, that was really, I know the city is getting it tenfold back with taxes.
Right.
Whatever they're giving, but that's something that maybe, uh, we should look into, or you should actually look into.
Yeah.
See if you can get the council to, do some numbers on that.
And, and we're not suggesting a specific approach to this. It's just conceptionally, I think it's something with, with, uh, a relationship with, we, you know, with the community that the, you know, there's some corporate, there's some corporate entities that may, that may want, be willing to donate some money and be involved in this. As just, as one example, but there's, there's lots of, lots of different ways we could go with this.
That was very effective.
Yeah.
Their vacancy was like two percent or one and a half percent.
Yep.
How many of the, uh, parcels are really shallow along this section? I know we, we, we.
If you don't mind me one second, I gotta go, go back. I'll, I'll, the area will show up very well. It's mostly the, the parcels that are, it's, it's, it's mostly these parcels that are pretty close to Big Beaver and then these parcels. Now you, you get up into here, these are the parcels that are a little bit more depth. You can actually do something with them. It's these parcels that are very shallow back here, which really directly abut up, very, I mean, they're right there with the residential.
Well, we did, we did rezone that one where they combined the two parts.
And that's, that's what we've encouraged when we meet with, when we meet with people that want to do something on these lots, we're saying, you really got to, you really got to take your adjacent parcel and consolidate the two to go to really make it worthwhile and then they, they come back and do that. That's like that case that we, that you, you mentioned, so.
But you can see for the, for a lot of the corridor, I mean. This was working too many times. You can see the demarcation line right there.
Yeah, sure.
Doesn't waver by an inch, it's, uh, you know, right here. So.
Yeah.
In, in a lot of cases, you can see on this side too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty consistent. So we know what we're dealing with. So, like Mr. Shepke alluded to, we need to strike a balance between encouraging reinvestment, redevelopment, but also protecting the residential neighborhoods that, that are right there.
And so many of these sites, actually the commercial sites on Rochester Road were former residences converted, yeah.
And one of the, I, I think one of the strengths of Rochester, of this section of Rochester Road is, um, it affords opportunities for the mom and, the mom and pop.
Right.
Yep.
And Big Beaver is, has got world-class restaurants, it really does. But I can only think of one non-chain restaurant in that whole corridor. That's, uh, that's, uh, Big Beaver, uh.
Beaver Tavern.
Big Beaver Tavern. The rest are, are chains.
Yeah, Pacanos. Pacanos is in there too though and that's, is, that's on chain, isn't it?
It's on.
On Rochester, yeah. I've talked about Big Beaver, Big Beaver, there's only one that I know of.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought you were talking about the.
Yeah. An apology to anyone watching if there's another one, but, uh.
Sai, Sai Tai?
Yeah. Sai Tai, I, I, my assumption was it was a chain, but I don't know. But my point is, is there's way more on Rochester Road.
Right.
It's, if you want them out, the, the independent, you go to Rochester Road. So it does afford that, you know, in terms of sense of place and, you know, you want a, a good kind of a home code, really go to Lukic's, you know, like a one, kind of a one-off.
What is the, the current status of the, the mini storage? What's going on there?
I think they, they intend to break ground, uh, this year in fall, I believe.
Where is that one to be located?
I think it's on the aerial, we could show it.
It's up here, isn't it?
I think, uh.
Yeah, I think it's west.
It's all American, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Cause there were like three.
This is all, if you go to Google Maps or Bing Maps, all the aerials don't have the improvements to Rochester Road. So you can see there's no boulevard right now in these aerials, so.
Right.
This building's gone. And this is where the self-storage. I think it's this location, it's in the middle right there.
Ben, has there been, given any thought to redistricting? In other words, uh, redistricting those residential properties as GB or some, something else and then.
These?
Not necessarily that far back, but let's say that whatever that is, a two-hundred or three-hundred foot setback from Rochester Road, that line, continue that line down and redistrict those, those properties and then as, you know, as a developer comes in, wants to buy up those homes, uh, demolish them, level them and, you know, they, like I said, that's, that was a common theme in Atlanta. I just.
We don't have the zoning layer on here. I think, I think for the most part, the, 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 the dice been cast, for the most part.
Okay.
Um, some of this, some of these may be mislabeled because the property abutting it is used residential, but, but maybe zoned, commercial. I mean, I, I have to pull the, the zoning layer. Are, we, honestly, I, I didn't contemplate that kind of an aggressive, I would call it relatively aggressive approach to maybe getting more, 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 uh, depth on the properties. We, uh, honestly, I thought about maintaining what we have and, um.
I think you'd get a lot of pushback.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, but that's what we're here to talk about. I mean, if the planning commission felt strongly about that, we could certainly go.
Well, it depends on what kind of development we want and what are their requirements.
Yeah, um.
Any bigger lots, then let's put it into the plan.
He said, yeah, the Vincente Gratsch.
Yeah, I mean, the, the zoning, there, the zoning, basically one parcel off, that's all commercial and anything two parcels back, regardless if it's here or here, that's zone, single family. So it does, it does, it does dive down here and then back out.
So who created that zoning?
Yikes.
Okay, nevermind.
Well, you know, I mean, this is a legacy. These houses have been here for a long time.
And, and the lots have gotten shallower as, as Rochester's gotten wider, the.
Yeah.
Oh, sure. The lots have gotten shallower, so.
You know, we, we did, we did talk about expanding, um, to really make this a, to be, make this a viable, dynamic commercial area down here, you, you would need more depth. Um, but a tenant of the master plan and zoning, it's protection of single-family residential and residential, et cetera. We didn't, we didn't want to go, we didn't think we should go down that road. So.
But like the lots to the very south, there's two or three lots. I don't know if we've, we've developed residential or not, but, uh, that may be conducive to.
Which ones?
Yeah, right, right there a little bit. Those three.
Yeah.
You can pull the zoning map just so.
Those are zone, those are zone commercial. Oh, yeah.
Whatever happened to that guy, that account? They wanted to put a green roof, uh, second story.
He got approved and he just hasn't done it yet.
He's, uh, it's ongoing.
Really?
There.
No, for example, if these people right here came into us with a development to consolidate these parcels, we'd probably consider it rezoning there. We'd probably be on a case-by-case basis as each parcel.
But that would involve the acquisition of six residential properties.
Right.
I mean, it's assembling and getting six property owners to sell at what price? Um, and that's a nice, that's a desirable neighborhood. It probably isn't going to happen.
I sit here and I hear comments about how the Troy master plan has a commitment to protecting residential housing. But what I don't hear is the commission taking a position on whether they wholly support that or whether they're flexible on it or whether it's just going to be something that we refer to in passing as we discuss development on these major corridors. And it seems to me that we need to either decide whether or not we are going to, in fact, protect our residential housing as we move forward in the development of the city or if it's just lip service. Because so much of what we're talking about really does affect the neighborhoods that surround it, in my opinion.
Well, it's always, I think it's always been a ten of the master plan to, uh, to protect residential neighborhoods.
Right. And it's, it's discussed, but is it supported?
Well, I, personally, I support it. You know, I, I think, uh, I think you find the majority of the planning commission goes too. I don't, I guess I don't quite understand what, what else you think we could do, uh, Ms. Cruz, to, uh, to, uh.
I'm not sure that there's, you know, necessarily much else we could do. I mean, in the time that I've sat here on the commission, there's not been, you know, major decisions about development that have been made that are concrete and have a date in which they're going to move forward. But, you know, I think about, you know, I guess it was this last comment about, you know, the residential housing that is abutting some of these shallower properties and the suggestion that, well, you know, maybe we could just convince the homeowners that, you know, have parcels that prevent us from expanding what the businesses could do, get sold. And I think, well, you could do that, but then you're just moving further into the, into the neighborhood. So do we or don't we support protecting the single-family residential areas? You know, we're going to look at the Sienna, right? Are we going to look at the Sienna, um, building permit application? And it's going to have an effect on the residential neighborhoods that surround it. So I'm saying as we move forward, I just think we need to think about what our position is. Are we in favor of developing the city at the cost to some extent of the residential neighborhoods or, or are we gonna protect the residential single-family homes? I'm just making, I, I, I'm not really asking for an answer. I'm just saying this is something that I think we need to consider as we discuss some of these building permits and these plans. Either we're going to protect them according to the master plan or it's going to be flexible or, or something.
Well, I guess the, the question becomes to what extent you protect them. You know, if, if there's a development, we, we, the city doesn't go out and ask the residents, would you be willing to sell? It's developers.
Well, right. I mean, we're not exercising eminent domain.
No, no.
I think it's on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I thought I would say.
We, we have to look.
Each situation's unique, I think.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I agree. I think we have to look at each case. We have to weigh the, you know, the pros and the cons. I, I don't think we could just say a blanket statement that at all costs, we are going to protect because there's, because there are some costs that for the greater good of the city or the area, that for the city, it's a better, better move. I mean, as the city matures and grows over time, it changes. Needs change. A lot of things change.
It's the only thing that's constant.
That's right. And so we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. You just can't say, well, because this has been a residential lot for umpteen years, that that's the best use of it again. Now, we're not talking about throwing people out of the lot.
Well, no, like I said, you can't. That's eminent domain.
That's right. But I think it has to be on a case-by-case basis and look at the greater good step back when you've been asked the question. What is the right answer for this development parcel or whatever it might be?
And I think we've done that over the decades.
Right.
Um, if you look at Big Beaver, it used to have homes on it between Crooks and, and Coolidge. Now it's all kind of retail. It used to be a school right on the corner of Crooks and Big Beaver.
That was so far back from performing.
Well, it was there when I moved in. It was, it was there when I moved in, so.
We have their playground equipment in our neighborhood.
I'm sorry?
We have their playground equipment in our neighborhood.
There you go. There you go. All, all I'm suggesting is, you know, I love the ideas that are being presented. I love the work that Ben and his company is doing as we examine these, these corridors and, and I would love for, for Troy to continue to grow. But I just think that we need to, as we discuss these things, understand where our priorities lie. Um.
And I fully support that. If, you know, the, the discussion of those issues are, is, is within the purview of the planning commission. And, uh, the, everyone will have a chance to, to provide their input during the public hearings.
Or any planning commission meeting for that.
It's, it's apparent that there isn't a lot of interest like now at this point, so.
Well, I'm stepping down off my soapbox now.
Well, we appreciate your info, we really do.
I mean, I think about balance. I think the challenge here is balance because the, the protection of single-family neighborhood, it is an important element in all four of these districts that we're, that we're talking about and it's, it's another thing we're going to be introducing when we're done with the four districts is the, the changing demographics and the need to provide different housing choices for people that are aging, well, we're all aging, but the, the baby boomers that are ready to start downsizing their homes. Do we le, maintain the status quo? And if we do that, then where are these people going to live? Do we, do we get a little creative in the existing single-family residential districts, allow for different, more creative uses in single-family? I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I do know that pretty soon a quarter of the population is going to be retired. And, and they're going to need housing that, you know, and the three thousand, four thousand, five thousand square foot homes aren't cutting it. What are we going to do? And then when that segment of the population is no longer with us, we're going to have this housing stock. It's got to be designed appropriately so that the next generation can do. These are questions, you know, that I struggle with. What's the answer? I don't know if there is one, one, one answer for that, but there's a definitely a balance between protecting what we have, encouraging reinvestment, redevelopment, like you see here. But then getting creative and allowing for other options for people that want to, that have lived in Troy, raised their kids in Troy, worked in Troy, and they want to continue to live in Troy, they just don't want to live in Troy in the house they're in.
You're looking at it here, aren't you?
That's another, I, in your gentle direction, but there's, I'm sure there's other people in the room that, that are, are thinking about the same thing. Um, and, you know, it's looking at your direction.
I was wondering why you were going to get out of that.
And, uh, in the mirror as well, but I mean, my, I've got a, my youngest is fifteen. She's going to be leaving soon. My wife and I are looking at each other, you know, this house is pretty big. You know, it's pretty big. So, um, balance, right? I mean, that's another conversation we're going to have. And, and that's potentially going to peck away at this notion that we're going to protect at all costs, single-family residential. It, it's not protecting at all costs, but it's, it's protecting reasonable protection. You know, and, and we don't want to upset the alpaca because one of the reasons Troy is considered a great place to live is because of our residential housing stock. And we don't want to upset that, of course.
I remember at the real estate forum, there was one developer who wanted to, if you could put the site plan up there or the.
Oh, yeah, put that up.
Yeah. I, I remember him. I thought that was really interesting. He said he, he would love to.
That's one or the other one.
Well, he was talking about, this one here is fine.
Yeah.
He was talking, I was going, I mean, just jumping, he was talking about like, like right here. Right here, put a three or four story multi-family.
Right, housing.
Housing, right here.
Where the people could walk to the.
Could walk, could walk to all the stores, can, can, wouldn't need a car. And, uh, yeah, people are going to be upset. People, the, the neighbors are going to be upset over here, but they'll get over it because they'll live there someday. Very heavy-handed.
Yeah.
Very heavy-handed.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not professing that. I'm saying that, that was what was discussed.
And I remember he even put you on the spot. He said, could that happen? And you said, not with the turns on.
No. No. So, different, different take and it's, uh, definitely, um, food for discussion and food for thought. And I'm not suggesting that we get creative that we do that, but there's gonna, we're going to have to put some thought into how we address this shortage for housing opportunities here in the near future.
But it could happen in a different environment in, for example, as we had spoke about earlier, uh, industrial setting where you had live-work space. And you brought that in there. So you're expanding on the existing residential area, but integrating an entirely different paradigm in terms of.
Right, right.
Could some of these more shallow lots along Rochester Road, uh, actually accommodate multiple housing? Or, or work-live-loft lofts type of thing?
In terms of zoning?
No, well, I know, not, not now.
Yeah, no, not now.
But we're talking about the master plans, so updates, so.
That's something we, one of the things we don't, we're not, we, we don't really, uh, hammer it very hard on is use. Could this, could these theoretically support mixed use? Well, I suppose in, in this example, second story, it could. You know, uh, when you, when you start to, when you start to go more dense, the problem with, the challenge with these lots is size.
Yeah.
Because parking, without decked parking, you know, it's a parking space is nine and a half by nineteen. That's almost two hundred square feet of property that's used up for parking. That's just a parking space and not, not the drive access to it. So it gobbles up, it gobbles up, uh, land very, very quickly. So when you start getting real, into mixed use, it.
Well, the parking decks are certainly private, you know.
Yeah.
Might be a good solution.
And though that area there is a GB zoning, correct?
Yes.
And that would be a permitted use in there, right?
The, the residential, I don't believe would. I don't believe residential, I don't, there's only one that's in front of me, but I don't, I don't believe residential's permitted on upper stories. I have to, I have to check. I don't, I haven't got the three hundred and fifty-page document memorized yet.
Well, I think it's a good point that, that perhaps we should consider that as, as a potential, uh, new use.
But just as an op, there, there are options. You know, if you expand your thought process a little bit, there's other options.
Well, when you start talking about viability, one of the, one of the elements that makes an area viable is residential.
Well, it's also, I, I know you're, but back to the multi-family, you know, sorry, go by aerial. You've got multi-family, you've got from Waddles north, that's lined with multi-family, multi-family. And the problem is they turn their back to Rochester Road. There's a big wall and a berm and it's, doesn't front on Rochester Road whatsoever. So, I, I think we need to remember that this from Waddles to Big Beaver is, it's, it's a commercial, it's a commercial corridor. And it probably will be a commercial corridor in the foreseeable future, but how do we make it a better, more viable commercial corridor? And how do we protect those properties that are adjacent to it? Uh, there, there might be some opportunities for some infills, multi, you know, multi-family or multiple, multiple use, but it really is going to, it.
Well, the Briggs, the Briggs Park development and, uh.
Which is north of Waddles, which is north of Waddles. Yeah, yeah. I mean, there, there's.
There are something right out to Rochester Road.
But again, if you look at that Briggs Park, there's a wall along the whole line of Rochester there, so.
Because primarily, probably because of the traffic noise.
Right. And so that's what I'm saying is that I don't know how viable a multi, a multi-family would be on these shallow death parcels because they'd be right against Rochester Road and I don't know. It, it's a commercial corridor and I think we need to improve on that. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, sorry. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
No, no, I, I was gonna, you know, for Troy to have a Clausen Manor-type facility with a high rise, we almost have to go into Big Beaver's zoning, where you have to have buildings of a certain height to make them economically viable for owners building them. And they do take a lot of parking, so I, I really can't foresee, besides the, the blight to the neighborhoods, I, I really can't see them going, uh, like Brett said, that's a commercial corridor, and I think that's probably what it's gonna have to always be, uh, without interfering with those neighborhoods and, and creating a problem. But, uh, now down Big Beaver Road, I think that could be another story, and yet you're still gonna have the walkability to businesses and eating facilities, uh, and all, all different kinds of, uh, you know, wonderful things for people to do. But, uh, you need to have a, a pretty big building with a, a lot of floor space, a lot of units to, to make it viable to build.
What else?
Wanna move on a second?
Yes.
Okay. And again, all these strategies tie, tie in with each other. The second one is to implement, um, the Rochester Road Access Management Plan. There are really three recommendations from that. Um, the first was to reduce the driveway. This picture is kinda grainy here, but in the actual document, it looks better. Um, is to consolidate driveways, and the number one way to do that is through lot consolidation, putting lots together so you can reduce the number of curb cuts. So, for example, these, this right, this, this site here is probably about three or four different parcels right now. One of the plans is to consolidate these, consolidate these together, you get a bigger developable area, and you can reduce the number of curb cuts, um, along Rochester Road. The second was, uh, second main, um, and these are just the strategies from Waddles to Big Beaver. There's a whole, long list of strategies along, all along Rochester, but we're only focusing on this short segment. The second strategy was to, um, put in a better crossing here at Troywood and Rochester, 'cause this actually is designated as a priority bike route in the trails, uh, in the trails plan. Um, so that was the second strategy. And the third strategy was to, um, allow for rear access behind parcels, um, either via an easement, cross-access easement, or even, uh, inserting an alley on some of these parcels to have a little bit more depth to them. Um, and that's a, inserting the alley, it's a much longer-term vision. Um, but in the near term, as these, some of these turn over, you can start requiring cross-access, so in time, as these all develop, you can actually get a full cross-access, entire length behind the buildings. So, those are the recommendations. We, the, these are not new, these were actually in the Rochester, um, Access Management Plan that was adopted, um, but we're just kinda bringing them back up to the forefront. I already supported a lot consolidation and the improvements on that. The second one, it's to talk about is, um, a consistent, uh, building and parking location, uh, requirement or placement. Um, and the reason for this is oftentimes, when you have offset buildings, you can't get in a front access, you can't share access, 'cause the building's in the way, and in the rear, property in the rear, you can't do it in the rear either. It just limits the amount of cross-access you can provide. So, if we can get a consistent frontage, you can then start getting some more cross-access between different parcels. And also, from a visual perspective, it just, it just is a lot smoother when you can just, when there's a consistent building line, entire, entire length, um, of the corridor. Any questions about these improvements, or strategies? Um, and last one, and this is, this is probably the most important, is to preserve adjacent residential character, um, and encourage perish-compatible development. We've already talked about this for the most part. Um, but there's really, um, the strategy really is through zoning for the most part, and that's to really, um, increase the amount of rear yard setback, as well as landscape buffer requirement between those parcels that front on Rochester Road and the adjacent single-family. So, one of this is to require a, a consistent, uh, front setback line. The second is to encourage pedestrian-oriented development. And what we mean by that is not necessarily encourage it by use, but when development comes in, make sure they have the proper, um, pedestrian connections to the adjacent sidewalks, both internal as well as along Rochester Road. Uh, the third is to, um, increase the setback between the building. There's numerous ways that we can do this. Uh, one community that, that I'm working with that has similar issues such as this is that you basically said the height, the, the building setback has to be equal to the height of the building. In some respects, you said the building setback has to be twice that of the height of the building. So, if you have a thirty-foot building, you have to have a sixty-foot setback. Uh, that might not work on this, 'cause again, you have limited depth, so you might render them somewhat unbuildable. Um, but we should look at some sort of, uh, height-to-setback ratio, um, as part of these zoning districts. And the third is to increase the amount of landscape buffer. I think it's ten feet now is all that's required in, in the rear parcel, uh, rear, uh, end of the parcels. That ten feet is not wide enough to really get anything of substantial growth, uh, within there. So, um, I would recommend that we look at maybe a twenty-foot, at a minimum of twenty-foot, but we can increase that based on the development, scope of development. But that, that's something that we should look at, too. So, those four in combination are, are another way to kind of, um, protect the adjacent residential.
And do you think it would be, I, I think it might be helpful for us, if you were to run a couple of scenarios using this approach, what does it really mean for a developer? What can he build on that site from, you know, whether you're talking about a, you said a hundred and fifty-foot depth of these lots, or two hundred feet?
They, they vary, but yeah, let's say average is a hundred and fifty.
Whatever, whatever it is, but, but so that we know that, you know, is, is it even feasible? You know, 'cause we're, we're saying some things here, that these are great ideas, but what does it leave a developer? Is it even feasible, if, once we put these controls on, what's left for him to actually develop?
Um, that's a good suggestion, and we, well, we can do that.
Okay.
The biggest limitation I think we're gonna get is, it's, it's, if, if we increase the setback in height and landscape buffer, it's gonna push buildings up close, which is gonna limit the amount of parking in front of the building. That's gonna be where they're gonna be, where the, the biggest route's gonna be for the development community, 'cause they want as much parking in front of the building. So.
You're, but we're not seeing that on Big Beaver. We're not seeing people not developing, because they can't park in front of the building anymore. I mean, there, there's, there's been several developments that have accepted the fact that, you know what, you gotta, when you design this, you gotta design it so that you have, uh, the exposure on the one side, and entrance on the other, or whatever. So, I don't know if it's a, I, I don't know if it's a deal breaker necessarily, but I think, you know, depending on the other pieces, how they fit together, you know, I think a reasonable case can be made, and we have history with it. Uh, we, we have some cases that it's working.
We just, we seem to have less pushback than Big Beaver. We, um, remember the, uh, the Auto Parts place that came in, and it was gonna be in a node, it was, doesn't matter which auto, auto parts dealer it was, but, um, we indicated it was in a node, and one story, they had to be close to the street, he just laughed and said, that kills that deal, not gonna happen.
Well, I guess, and again, I, I'm sure that happened, but how, how savvy of a developer was he? You know, if, if he's doing the same old thing that's been done for a hundred years, of course he's gonna walk away from the deal. But, you know, if you talk to people that are willing to.
John, my, my point, I, I totally agree with you. I, I, I do, but I do think it's real, I think we need to be realistic, that we need to allow some parking in front of the building.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not saying none at all.
Whether it's one row, two rows, fifty percent of the required parking, I, I don't know the right answer. I can just tell you from our experience talking to developers, that's gonna be the biggest pushback from them, is that you're not allowing us to park, the majority of our parking in front of the building.
Well, we had a hell of a time with Starbucks. You remember that? They came in twice.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we won, and we got it where we wanted it.
And it works, which is.
And it works, right? But it was a real. That was a real, real challenge.
You know, and I, I wanna be, you know, when we do my job, I didn't say, this is not Big Beaver, too. We don't have the land values here, too. So, we, there's a balance. We wanna encourage development, but we don't wanna be so restrictive that we encourage, we encourage, our standards are so high that nothing. Because a lot of these sites, they're probably making pretty good money as it is. You know, their rents are high enough, they're, they're turning out, so they don't have any necessary incentive to, to, to reinvest. So, there is a, this is gonna be, Rochester Road's a tricky one. It's gonna be a real interesting balancing act about what we require versus what's realistic based on the market.
I think the greater challenge on Rochester Road is, what are you gonna do with all the existing stock? It's all over the site. I mean, people are just gonna go in and start tearing buildings down, you know?
I have a disconnect, I don't understand as a consumer, what, why does it matter whether the parking is in front or the side or in the back? As long as I have a place to park my car, and I can get into the store or the restaurant that I wanna go to, why do I care whether I'm parking in the front?
I agree a hundred percent with what you just said, but what we're hearing from the real estate community is that they have to have identifiable parking in front of the building to make that a viable business.
They have to look busy.
They have, they have to provide the option.
Okay.
A retailer will claim, um, if this is all taken up by parking, and there's, but there's a thousand spaces in the back, and people see this is all taken up by parking, those keep going, and they won't stop. That's what a Realtor, a, a, a retailer.
That's a slippery slope. Take away all the parking in the front, so they can't tell how busy it is, you know, how full it is.
It's a little severe.
I just need a place to park, and preferably under a tree, so that it's shaded.
Excuse me, Brett, is the height, have, has height restriction changed along Rochester Road, like, for example, mini storage?
Has it changed since that time?
Yeah.
No.
That's what we're gonna try to update it.
Well, that'd be one of our goals, is to.
And one of the things, that's a good question, because one of, one of the things that we talked about, uh, I think it's a couple of meetings, was maybe the height has to be in proportion to the size of the lot, period.
Exactly.
Or, or maybe you have to, uh, increase the height of the stories from the re, from the rear, from residential, and just kinda step above.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's, the, the, the reality with what we're talking about here, though, is the depth is already set.
Right.
For the most part, it's, for the most part, it's consistent, and it's relatively shallow. So, you know, there was a lot of people that felt that four stories in this location is too high, period. So, even, even if you have the, the relationship with the setback in the height, because of the limited depth, that we're really only talking, you know, two or three stories anyways. So.
But that's exactly the point, if you, based on the rear setback, based on the building height, limited height of the building.
Because the, 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 the development we're talking about was setback seventy-five feet. The height of the building is sixty-seven feet. So, it's actually less than the setback. Um, it's setback basically as far away from the residential property as it can be. Uh, but it's four stories. Now, thankfully, the u, the.
It's faster.
I thought, was it five?
I think they.
Okay, my memory's fading here. But, the use, the, what.
It was a less intense use.
It was, it was about as less, the least intense use you could have, so mini storage, which is limited hours, not very busy, um, you know, it, way better than, as far as I'm concerned, than McDonald's with a drive-thru would have been as a neighbor. So, there's, but that needs to be factored in. The issue is the bulk and the height.
And the shadows.
And the shadows.
So, our point here is to throw this idea out to see if the planning commission is, yes, we should look at zoning on, some of the zoning requirements in the CB and GB district. We can come back with multitude of options for you to consider about how we, what's that ratio, how do we do it? Do we just limit, have a flat height maximum, et cetera? Um, but first, we wanna get by, and this is heading in the right direction, that we need to provide additional buffers when we can.
I like the direction you're headed with that. I think it's, it's excellent, mainly because, yes, you, you do help the retailers have that front parking, it's not Big Beaver where it's ten feet right to the, I don't know, right away. It does provide ample, I like the, the distance that parking lot provides, uh, for our, the residents away from the actual building. And you're talking two to three stories, that sounds about right, you know? In other words, it almost looks like you were talking earlier about some ratios in other cities where you've got two to one, or, you know, more than one to one. Uh, in other words, two, two times the, the distance the building is away from the residential to one of the building height. I, I like this, it, it looks very functional, it looks very attractive, too, which is.
Balance, yeah.
Yeah, it's really nicely done. Thanks, Ben.
I take no credit for, for this.
Okay.
But I appreciate it, thank you.
I, I do agree with the landscape buffer, too, being, I think we need to.
Wire.
I'm not sure we need to go to twenty feet, but I think a, a minimum of fifteen would be a good improvement.
Well, twenty feet's the depth of a parking space. That's why it's kind of.
Right.
Good number.
That's a good one. Well, nineteen.
Nineteen.
Well, again, I think, uh, you know, going back what John said, you really gotta see what you can build on it. I mean, we, we can set all the restrictions we want, ideally, but if a developer can't build it, we're dead. You gotta give us some examples of that when we do that.
That was last slide.
Oh, last one's the action plan, um, with all the strategies with the different actions to, to do it. John, you raised a really good point about what does mid-long, or what does near, mid, long mean, last mean? Um, we have basically put this in the order, in the plan, and it's, we find near to be one to two, mid to be three or five, and, and long to be six to ten. And again, we encourage, if this does get adopted, that every year, every two years, maybe, planning commission goes through this and starts crossing off what's been accomplished, uses this kind of a blueprint or a checklist to go down. And then, you know, like, required by state law every five years, you need to really update this, and you need to. So, by that point, you're hopefully through the near and mid, and you're starting to think about your long-term actions.
Well, I, the other thing I think we need to always remember, uh, is this gonna be approved by the city council? Because the last time it was not.
I have a feeling it will be.
Well, I think so, too, I think they're pretty activist. And one of the, one of their main concerns was this Rochester Road and the heights. So, I think we've got to, you know, if, if we want this thing to be adopted, uh, we need to consider some strategies for, for bringing the height down of future buildings
Yeah, and I like the idea about the height, the setback ratio.
I like that, too.
And that really makes a lot of sense, based upon the depth of lots.
But you're still gonna get the question, well, how many stories can I build?
It's a shallow lot, and you can't build five stories. It's just impossible. Not a room on the lot.
Right.
You know, at, at one community, we did the height, we, and I said, there's, there's a multitude of options we can show you. One community, we did, we did a height-to-setback ratio, we maxed the height at, I think it was your three or four stories, but we allowed an additional story through a conditional use process. So, again, it's another case-by-case review if appropriate, it's another way to think about it, too.
But there's no story for what, I'm sorry?
Through a, through a conditional use process.
Oh, conditional use.
So, it's three, three stories by right, you get an extra story if you, if you go through the conditional use process. Um, thank you for your comments on Rochester. If you have any more comments between now and next couple meetings, feel free to email me. Um, we'll take your comments, and then we'll come back with a, um, development scenario based on some of the stuff we put on tonight. Okay?
Yeah.
Excellent. Just a couple of minutes of your time, please. The reason I pulled this up, next month, we're gonna be talking about Maple Road. And, uh, this is the zoning map. And this is the zoning map. And as you all know, there are three form-based zoning districts in the city. One of them is, is a Big Beaver zoning district. One of them is the neighborhood node district, which there's twenty-one neighborhood nodes at major mile intersections throughout the city. And the third is Maple Road, form-based. And the zoning ordinance as we know it, since it was comprehensively rewritten, was adopted in April of two thousand and eleven. And I'm trying to, besides MJR, I'm trying to think of a, of a property that was developed under the node district, under the Maple Road provisions, I can't think of any. So I guess my question is, is it working? Because just like what we talked about, the parking in front of the building and some of the, some of the creative approach, approaches that seem to be, developers seem to be really embracing along Big Beaver, it's not happening here on Maple Road. And I'm wondering, and Ben and I were wondering, you know, could we, could we take a more creative approach and a more, provide more incentive for developers to, to invest in Maple Road? You know, could it be as simple as Maple Road reverting to IB and IB, which is very, very accommodating laws of wide range of uses and, and you know, cowboy town as Alan Carroll acquainted. Should we, should we keep Maple Road form-based and perhaps just allow for more creativity and maybe be a little bit more lax on, on some of the form requirements? I guess, we're not asking you to answer that right now, but I guess the question is, is Maple Road the district, you think, is it, is it effective and should we keep it as is?
I have a question back to you. Based on the economy that we just went through and development almost, you know, coming to a halt, and any developers that really wanna make, getting back into the game would much rather be on Big Beaver than they would be on Maple Road. Do you still feel confident that the, that the plan that we have in place is not a plan, that a plan is not working because it's not the right plan as opposed to some other outside influences?
I think there's room for allowing more flexibility on Maple Road based on conversations we've had over the last three or four years.
I'm all for creativity, believe me. So I'm not opposing to what you're saying, I just wanna make sure before we make the case to be more creative or to open things up, is it a solid case?
Right.
Or a solid basis?
I think Brett, I don't think Brett and I are suggesting we throw everything out and start over. It's, we need to make some tweaks.
Yeah.
That's kinda where we're at.
MJR is a critical project and it looks, if anyone's driven out there recently.
I just saw one of them there.
It looks fantastic.
But I'll tell you what I didn't like, and that is I didn't like the entrance and the exit patterns.
They fought for those.
I, I, I found it a little confusing. You know, my first time there, I had to come in like at Subway and then I parked the car and then when I was leaving, I found that I couldn't easily get out the Subway way that I came in and then I had to go out by the bank.
Yeah.
And it wasn't well marked for me. I mean, I was kind of like, huh, which way do I go?
Yeah. But MJR was a big time investment, a critical project.
Mm-hmm.
And it's beautiful, I think it's gonna stimulate investment, so that's, that's a good thing. And I think that's gonna come in that area in the near future for sure. I'm thinking more in terms of the whole corridor and if this roadmap that we've got here and these regulations, are they giving us, are they giving us all that we're, what we should be getting here on Maple Road? And I, I think, I think we need to tweak it.
I think a little more in tweaking.
Yeah.
There's still a lot of private residents too on Maple Road, yeah.
It's definitely a mixed bag.
You wanna talk about parcel depth, I mean, these are.
Yeah.
I mean, these are even less than there is up on Rochester, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, can I see that for a second? And there's also, yeah, there's, there's these here, and I'm gonna, don't, don't comment on this, but, because I don't wanna go, but you know, there's some, the same problem up on Big Beaver as well, where the die was set years ago and it's, we've kinda, we're struggling with, with that. But yeah, like, like, like you indicated, there, Mr. Evans, there's, there's residential still, there's a mile, there's a mile of Big Beaver where, you know, the southern part of, part of it isn't even our, our community. There are residences that have been converted into offices that are still there, there's industrial.
Home reading.
Home reading, yep. So.
Don't knock it till you've tried it.
She's obviously successful, spent there a long time.
She's got a new sign and everything else, it's updated since MJR came in, you know what I'm saying?
Global.
And I think, I think we're, we're not so concerned about some of these, the intersections of the major miles. It's, it's this, it's the middle interior sections that really need focus, they need, they need to be thought of. So, you know, one of the concepts is maybe keep the form-based kind of as-is in these intersection, but maybe think about more flexibility in the interior. I, we don't know that yet, we're just kinda kicking the idea around about, about that, so.
But this is also definitely an opportunity for maybe assembling properties too, if you wanted to increase the depth of developer came in, you know?
We've got, this area, this is the auto mall and industrial, so then you've got here where the abutting area is residential, here where it's closet, so, but industrial to the north.
And those are pretty deep, I mean, those, all those parcels are definitely deep enough to do personal development of that.
Yeah.
They're kinda narrow.
You know, it's interesting, I, I know some people have moved in between Livernoy and Crooks and it's really affordable for small businesses. They have, they come to these industrial areas and they meet small office buildings and they've really created some opportunity for these small businesses to move in. So that is a challenge, but it's, it's a great opportunity, I think, for some entrepreneurs in the area.
I have a neighbor that's a, has a law firm on Maple between Livernoy and, Livernoy and Rochester. And one of those little small office buildings.
Oh yeah.
The other area that's really pretty bad is Livernice. That is a hot spot.
Don't get me started.
Yeah. That, that's another area that we should look into later.
Anything else, should we, should we commission tonight?
No, we've got a lot to go with.
We've got a lot, right.
Thank you.
All right, we look forward to your suggestions. Again, item number eight is public comments, or items on the current agenda, again, we'll pass over that if there's no one in the audience. And number nine, planning commission comment. Let's start with you, Mr. Crapp this evening.
I just wanna say that I'm really impressed with this. This is incredibly well done and gave a good, great overview of what exists, gave good direction on what it could be, and some ideas about solutions, put in a timeline for action items. I mean, this, it's really well done and again, it's, and a result, if this is followed and carried through, will result in a better city.
Mr. Tagle.
I echo that sentiment. I thought that the report for the Rochester Road presentation was outstanding, as I mentioned to you, I thought you did a beautiful job with it. The only comment I have along those lines however is, as was voiced, you know, conceptually it makes wonderful sense, it sounds good, things look great, it was clear, but if there's the ability to provide a practical application and see what does that really mean for a specific parcel, that would enhance our ability to know whether it's real and doable, or what does that mean in terms of availability for a developer, or how could you modify a parcel?
Right. Mr. Tagle.
Did we not have a ZODA in front of us for the heights on Rochester Road as a result of the five-story self-storage?
Yeah.
I haven't thought of it, remember, no?
No. We have some, we've thought about it, we have some draft language, some options to consider, but we haven't actually brought it to the commission yet.
Do we feel that it's going to be, take that form as opposed to what we're talking about here? As far as changing, changing, changing at a more rapid, at a rapid, more rapid pace?
We, you know, obviously the master plan sets the stage for zoning ordinance, I have to say that. But I think if, if the planning commission is confident that this is the direction they wanna go, I, I don't see why we can't start presenting zoning ordinance, you know, options for the planning commission to consider about changes to those districts. In the near term, what I'm saying. We don't have to wait till this is adopted before we go back to you.
I, I think that would go a long way, positively.
Particularly considering the controversy of the mini storage.
Well, and what I would suggest at that point, Mr. Tagle, is why this, the, the development scenarios that you had suggested, why don't we do that as part of the zoning ordinance changes? So we can actually put it to some regulations.
Makes sense.
Regulations, so if you, if you're okay with that, I would suggest we do it in, through that realm rather than the master plan.
Okay. Mr. Strapp.
I was rather disappointed with Kelly Service's tearing down their shrubbery that they outlined around there. Is there any feedback on that?
Yeah, their, the shrubs were, were dead, were dead and dying.
Yeah.
And they've already, they, they wanted an opportunity to take them, they were getting so many complaints about dead plants, they're taking them down, they've got a plan to, to reforest the, the greenbelt with trees, and that'll be forthcoming. But they, what they didn't wanna do was plant now in the hottest, the hot season where the plants aren't gonna be, have an opportunity to survive. So in, as soon as the season allows it, then you'll see trees planted there.
Well, that's great. I mean, that is, that was one of the examples, I thought that was excellent in terms of hiding the cars, but still, you know, really having a green area, I thought that was great. The other is.
Can I add just before you?
Sure.
They're gonna have a tree canopy as well as low lying shrubs, so they're gonna have both.
Both, that's great. That's, that's gonna be really great. The other thing is, any status on the sculpture that was supposed to be put up on that last PUD in front there?
I think I sent the rendering. It's not up yet.
No.
It should, it should be up soon. I can, I'll find, I'll talk to the building tomorrow. I stand as update.
Ms. Cruz.
The only comment that I have this evening is, is I appreciate, you know, the hard work that Brett and Ben do in coming to us with great ideas and thoughtful planning process and, and I look forward to more great things about the city to talk about. Thank you guys very much.
That's true.
Well, anyway, thank you very much. It was a well-laid out presentation and I appreciated a lot of things. One thing I think we do have to move is that on that height restriction because I guess I base everything, being in this area a long time and even being in Southfield when it was, was not very well developed and seeing what they have, we don't, we wanna keep things consistent, we wanna keep them so that we don't have, we keep eyesores to a minimum and residents protected. So I really like what everything went on here tonight and I thank you for all your hard work and efforts, both of you guys do a great job. Thank you. Thank you, please.
Mr. Senzic.
I'd just like to echo what everyone else is saying. Do a great job and really proud to be a resident of Troy and be on the planning commission, so, thank you.
Mr. Bynum.
Uh, no, thank you. I had nothing.
Ben? Kathy?
No.
Okay, I think we're adjourned.